Good evening and welcome to the tonight's regular school board meeting. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. We will begin very quickly with the approval of the agenda. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. And a second, Heather. I have one change for the agenda. Under the superintendent's report, the part-time position discussion, we will not be talking about that tonight. Does anyone else have any changes? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda? Seven and six in favor. None opposed. Okay, we will move now to public minutes, public comments, excuse me. There are, I have 10 names here. We have 30 minutes set aside for public comment, so you'll have about three minutes each. There is a timer on the television screen for you to keep track. Please try to not repeat everything, but please feel free to say what you need to say, and we'll begin with Kathy Baker. Oh, and I apologize. When you step up, please state your name and the town that you live in.
Good evening, Kathy Baker, Lee, New Hampshire. My name, my name is Kathy Baker. I am the phys ed teacher at Massway School. I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to Oyster River. I've taught in the district for 36 years and will be retiring at the end of this school year. Thank you for allowing me to live my goal set as a six-year-old, to be a gym teacher. I've had an amazing career doing exactly what I love, never once considering my teaching profession as a job. I do what I love and I love what I do. First, thank you to all the administrators and school board members over the years. Your support of educational excellence has been unwavering. I would also like to personally wish Dr. Morris congratulations on his upcoming retirement and Misty Lowe, my current principal. Second, thank you to all my teaching colleagues, past and present, passionate, caring, creative, and dedicated. I have been honored to work and grow with you as an educator. Thirdly, thank you to the Oyster River Middle School and Massway families. I am forever grateful that you trusted me with your most prized possession, your children. Lastly, thank you to all the current and former students I have taught and coached. Your energy, excitement, and love of movement was impressive. As I finish up my last few days, I will continue to think how blessed I am that Oyster River will always be a big part of who I am. Thank you for letting me speak and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Congratulations and thank you for all your service to the district. We really appreciate it. Lauren Robertson.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Robertson from Madberry. I'm a mom of four, two of whom are currently at MoHaramit, one is an incoming kindergartner and one starting preschool. I was unaware of the workshop last week, so my comments are based on information that were shared in the class of 2037 Facebook group. First of all, to the parents who learn their child might not attend their preferred or expected school, I completely empathize with your frustration and disappointment. I'm sure I would feel the same in your place. That being said, the reality of living in a district with two elementary schools where it says on the documentation for registration that you may not end up at the school you registered means that you may find out a different school is where you're headed. I learned earlier this week that should the decision about kindergarten placement cause MoHaramit to make room for an additional 18 students, whether by losing the music room, making the art room a shared space, or adding a modular classroom, it would not be the kindergarteners who would be impacted, but one of the older classes. I'd like to remind everyone that the incoming fourth graders are the COVID kindergarteners. Their early education experience has already been disrupted and challenged in a way that none of the incoming kindergarteners will have to experience or relate to, thank goodness. I do not support a decision that could negatively impact their elementary experience again. From a broader perspective, I struggle to understand considering moving music to a cart or diminishing the current programs and school experience overall for an entire student body when there is space available at an equally wonderful school. Even modular classrooms ultimately detract from the overall experience, let alone the burden they may place on taxpayers and security nightmare. I understand that long-term a renovation may be needed to create additional space. I think that's a conversation that needs to happen on its own to evaluate the long-term big picture in our school district. That being said, to change pre-existing district policy on a whim and/or lessen the experience for an entire student body or even just one grade in order to accommodate disappointed parents is not something I support. On a quick personal note, I know starting kindergarten can be emotional for parents and kids. Our oldest raced into school on day one and never looked back. Our second struggled until the spring of kindergarten and is now a thriving first grader and can't wait to go to second grade. We're lucky that we live in a wonderful district with two amazing elementary schools, a supportive school board, and fantastic teachers and staff. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Tori Bullock, and I apologize if I mess up your last names.
Hi, Tori Bullock, Madberry. My name is Tori Bullock and I have two daughters that attend MoHaramit currently. I'm here tonight because I heard through word of mouth that there is an over-enrollment issue the district is facing with its incoming kindergarteners, specifically among those who were registered at MoHaramit this last spring. I was not aware of so, I was not aware and so did not attend the recent special workshop on this issue, so apologies in advance for possibly not having completely accurate information. I thank the school board for being open to feedback and I felt compelled to speak tonight on this issue. My oldest daughter began kindergarten in fall of 2020. Her kindergarten experience was unlike anything I would have wished for her. She recited "Six Feet Apart" often, complained about not being able to hug her friends or sit together, and due to social distancing guidelines, most of her encore classes were brought to her classroom. I remember vividly in the spring of 2021, when guidelines changed, she came home and was ecstatic that she could now be three feet apart from her friends. As the school board considers its options tonight, I hope you will consider the rising fourth graders and their early experience in our district. We know children are resilient, especially those COVID kindergarteners, but please do not take away their encore spaces or seclude them from the rest of the school in a modular classroom. While I understand it may be disappointing to some families to be enrolled at a school they did not expect, I do not support a decision that would prioritize the preference of a few while taking away from the experiences of many. We already know that those few incoming kindergarteners that are affected will be safe and get a high-quality education at either school. If Massway has the physical space to accommodate them, it seems the least disruptive to the district to enroll them there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelly Napier.
Hi, my name is Kelly Napier and I'm from Madberry. Thank you for reconsidering this issue and giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. When we were looking for a house to buy, one of our top priorities was to buy in a neighborhood full of children. We also fell in love with the Oyster River District and specifically MoHaramit, which is why we chose a neighborhood in Madberry. If our neighborhood happened to be redistricted to Massway, we might be a little disappointed, but it's also a great school. However, reading the letter that our kindergartner was individually districted out of our neighborhood felt like a punch in the gut, especially considering that there's multiple other kindergarteners on our street who are not redistricted because they have an older sibling. It makes me sick to my stomach to think of my five-year-old standing all alone at a bus stop while other kids are at another one, or the idea of him being on the same bus and my child having to watch basically the whole bus exit the school he thought he was also going to get to go to and then has to travel on to another school. Although no one wants to see programming impacted and a modular classroom has financial considerations, these options are significantly better than the current option. Principal Goldsmith mentioned he would only put the third or fourth graders in a music room or in the modular classroom because he wouldn't want to do that to a kindergartner. However, what's currently being asked of these 18 children is far worse. It cannot be underestimated the social and emotional impact this choice will have on these children and even academic impact as we think about how this impacts their feelings towards school. I truly believe that any of the options laid out during the planning meeting are a better choice than the current option, and I urge anyone with voting power tonight to make a better choice on behalf of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Napier.
Hello, my name is Patrick Napier, also from Madberry, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. The district currently has 36 elementary school classrooms. Based on your projections, starting in September of 2025, the district will need 37. The following year, 38. This is the actual problem, and the trend may continue due to the increase of families moving to New Hampshire since 2020. The proposal to shuffle around classrooms does not actually solve the problem. It simply alleviates the issue for one year while making the bus routes more expensive and complicated for at least a decade and separating children from the rest of their neighborhoods. When discussing the separation of children from their neighborhoods, I think some people have a picture of a neighborhood that is already divided with some children going to Massway and some going to MoHaramit. This is not what we are talking about here. In this scenario, you would have entire neighborhoods of children going to MoHaramit with one kindergartner going to Massway. I actually grew up in a similar situation. The children in my neighborhood all went to the public school while I went to the Catholic school. It definitely makes it a lot harder to develop friendships with the neighborhood children because you're not fully part of their community. That is not the experience that I would like for my children. Looking for that neighborhood community is why we chose to move to our street. It's a cul-de-sac with 49 houses that have dozens of children. If this plan is implemented, our child will be the only one to be bused out of town to a different school. This will certainly negatively affect him, and if I could have predicted this, we would not have moved to Madberry. I hope the board reconsideres. All three alternative solutions presented at the workshop will solve the issue for 2024 without making the long-term problem worse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Todd Eiseman.
Hello, can you hear me okay? My name's Todd Eiseman. I'm from Durham. First and foremost, this isn't something I do all the time, so just bear with me. First and foremost, I wanted to say that I understand the challenges associated with the decision that has to be made over at MoHaramit. What I don't understand is the process. In no way, shape, or form have I wanted to be contentious through any of this, but literally every decision that I've made for the last six years was to get my son Jackson into the MoHaramit school system, and that includes calling ahead before moving, buying my house, confirming the zoning of this, that we were in the correct zone for the school, bus routes, everything including buying an actual duplex of which two other kids, my tenants, are going to MoHaramit. So as it stands, three children are in my house, two tenants are going to MoHaramit, but my son can't. For some of us, this isn't a decision between MoHaramit and Massway, and unfortunately, I don't feel like there's really been an appeal process that I can personally explain our situation, but, and I don't feel like doing it here, but I really, really, I just really wish that there was a little bit more communication, and I wish I understand why the decisions were made, and I'm hoping that you might reconsider. I mean, I understand some of the things that other people are talking about, but there are other folks here that have done everything in their power, and as a dad, I just want what's best for my child, so I appreciate your time and your consideration, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura Klepper-Pike. I hope I got that right.
You did, actually. That was very impressive. Laura Klepper-Pike, Madberry. Good evening. My name is Laura Klepper-Pike, and together with my husband, three young boys, two dogs, and six chickens, we are proud residents of Madberry. We moved to the area from the Midwest two years ago so I could take a professor position at UNH. When we chose our house, we did so based on the proximity of MoHaramit. As the crow flies, our house is 150 meters from the pumpkin patch and 500 meters from the main building. At least weekly, we walk our three young boys through the trails surrounding the school and share laughter on the playground that our oldest Nathaniel calls "my school." I want to thank the school board for considering options to the kindergarten over enrollment issue. As a scientist, I see the world in terms of the scientific process. First, observe, then make a hypothesis, carry out the experiment, and analyze the data. So let's extend this analogy to the situation at MoHaramit and the initial plan to enroll the children at Massway. Observation: The incoming kindergarten class is over-enrolled. Hypothesis: Forming a new classroom at Massway and enrolling the extra children there will provide a long-term solution to the problem of over-enrollment in the Oyster River Cooperative School District. Experiment: Let's see what happens in the fall and beyond. Sometimes, based on not having enough information, we formulate the wrong hypothesis, and our experiment either gives us the result we weren't expecting or it fails altogether. Now with my research, this usually involves lost time and research funds, but we can usually regroup pretty quickly and experiment again with minimal repercussions. But in the context of why we are all here tonight, a failed experiment on our families can result in additional time and stress for working parents, missed family time from siblings due to long bus rides, divided neighborhoods, and confusion in our children. But sometimes, we are lucky enough that we have additional information right before the start of our experiment that makes us pause, reconsider our hypothesis, and formulate a new experimental design. In the case of the over-enrollment issue, we are fortunate to have additional information, and it was laid out so beautifully in the workshop. And this information is that we know that temporarily moving these children to Massway will end up causing the same over-enrollment issue to happen at that school at Massway in a few years due to incoming siblings. I want to thank the school board for using a data-driven approach to this issue and voice my support for reconsidering temporary and permanent ways to increase more classroom space at MoHaramit. My three boys, Nathaniel, incoming kindergarten class this year, and his brothers Christopher and Caleb, who will join in the fall of 2026, look forward to our morning and afternoon walks to and from school. Thank you again, and I can't thank you enough for your consideration and your transparency in this entire process. I am confident that the school board will make a decision that best considers the needs of our families in the district, and I look forward to our children calling MoHaramit home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Taylor Prengasmore.
I'm Taylor Prengasmore from Madberry. I'm the parent of a first grader at MoHaramit, a daughter in pre-K, and a seven-month-old at home. To be completely honest, I do not have a strong opinion about the district's kindergarten placement challenges. However, I do have a few concerns that I feel are important to consider when making the decision. The issue of physical space is one many districts have been facing for decades and an issue this district has developed a viable solution for. My concern, though, isn't regarding the physical space. My concern is on the tax of resources needed when adding an additional classroom to a space not built to handle it. Examples of the resources I'm referencing include staffing, the special education programs, special education caseload sizes, early literacy group sizes, the school's response to intervention, the RTI abilities, just to name a few. When my son was in kindergarten, his teacher noticed his THR calculation was slightly off. She believed it could potentially impact his ability to decode TH words when reading and spelling. Without a meeting, an evaluation, or a diagnosis, he was enrolled in a short-term prevention program with the speech and language pathologist to remediate this slight struggle. This service was provided because the school's resources were not strained or stretched too thin. I worry that the addition of another class without the addition of resources will water down the programs and support our students are currently able to access. Additionally, we have unbelievable Unified Arts programs in our district. Teachers in our Unified Arts programs have been nominated in one Teacher of the Year awards. I believe this is because they too are provided the resources, planning time, and space to conduct unbelievable programs for our students district-wide. I worry that taking one of their classrooms or adding additional classes to their day will negatively impact their ability to maintain the integrity of the programs and curriculums they've developed. One thing that drew our family to Oyster River was the community support, resources, and prioritization of education. I worry that the presented plans to create space for the over-enrolled students may harm and dilute the academic culture for both the incoming kindergarten students and those already enrolled at MoHaramit. The physical space can be created. My bigger concern is ensuring the resources, programs, and support our students are accustomed to at MoHaramit and Massway continues. Do we have a plan for that yet? I'm grateful to be part of the community, of a community that prioritizes education for our future leaders, a goal not found in every district. I thank you for your time and your dedication to our families and our children.
Thank you very much. Blake Janelle.
Hey, everybody. My name's Blake Janelle. I live in Madberry. I was lucky enough to attend MoHaramit School 30 years ago, as did my sisters Leah and Haley, one of whom is sitting behind us here. And today, I happen to live in the same house that I grew up in. So when it became time to enroll my five-year-old son, Jack, in kindergarten, we had expected that he would be enrolled at MoHaramit. But that's not what happened. He was enrolled at Massway. And the issue with that is not about his quality of education. We are lucky to live in a district that has two great elementary schools, and we believe that Jack and my other two children would receive an amazing education at either school. But we need a solution that prioritizes the proximity of the child's home to the school that they're placed in. We live in the far corner of Madberry, 20 minutes away, at least over 20 minutes away from Massway, in a neighborhood of kids that attend MoHaramit, which is seven minutes away. My son, Jack, also has two siblings, Chase, who's three, and Andy, who's nine months, as well as a two-year-old cousin, Wesley, who's our next-door neighbor. Any solution that has relatives and neighbors placed in different schools that are further away should be an absolute last resort. This is also not a new issue. When I attended MoHaramit 30 years ago, as well as my sisters, we had art on a cart. We had modular classrooms. My sister even had kindergarten in the town hall. And these did not materially affect our experience. In fact, we look back on it very positively. We need a long-term solution as well as an interim one, like the alternatives proposed, so that we're not having this conversation for the next 30 years. I really appreciate you considering the alternatives, and I hope you appreciate how important this issue is to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Emily Johnson.
Hi, my name's Emily Johnson, and public speaking is my nightmare, so forgive me. I live in Madberry, by the way. I came to speak to you as the concerned parent of an incoming kindergartner who was redistricted to Massway. Though I'm an Oyster River employee, the thoughts and concerns I'm sharing with you are as a parent and a Madberry resident only. Firstly, I'd like to thank all of you for your timely and careful consideration of the community's concerns regarding the redistricting of 18 kindergarten families from across the district to Massway to solve the over-enrollment issue. My family has deep connections with MoHaramit and Oyster River as a whole, which is why receiving this news on May 21st felt so disruptive and shocking. I attended MoHaramit as a kindergartner in 1994 with Sarah and Blake behind me. I attended MoHaramit and I met my best friend on the bus to kindergarten in MoHaramit 30 years ago. She and I have been preparing our eldest daughters to attend kindergarten together for as long as they can remember. To say that I've made life-impacting decisions based on MoHaramit and this school district would be an understatement. After overwhelmingly positive experiences at all of the district's schools, my husband and I, also an Oyster River alum, purchased a home in Madberry with our Paramount draws being our daughters attending MoHaramit right down the road, as well as having my mom, my siblings, and my best friends all within about two miles. Since attending the workshop, I've talked with other families and have identified some common themes and threads in our conversations. Most common are the sad feelings that come up when families talk about their child being moved away from their home school, their childhood best friends, and their neighbors who they've planned to start kindergarten with in the fall. Immediately following that emotional response, usually come the logistical worries. Many families like my own had already begun to troubleshoot the logistics of starting kindergarten by using the support of friends, family, and neighbors to share things like rides, before-and-after-school care, and emergency pickups or drop-offs. For many families, to move to a different, further-away school creates a host of potential hurdles. Finally, the long-term impact of moving 18 families and potentially more next year rises to the top of the concern. The redistricted families were moved because they did not have older siblings at MoHaramit. Most, if not all, have younger siblings, making this a 10-plus-years-long issue, where children are being bused across the district and away from their neighborhoods and friends based on being the oldest sibling in enrollment bubble year. I respectfully urge you to consider one of the other solutions that was proposed at the workshop. After learning that space is going to become an issue in the next few years regardless of redistricting these families, I feel that space should be made temporarily either by borrowing an encore classroom or using modulators, with the understanding that a MoHaramit extension will soon be proposed. I don't deny that this will have some drawbacks, especially for the impacted teachers' curricula. However, I feel that it's more fairly spread to avoid a sizable emotional and logistical problem for 18 families, while also avoiding the creation of a new and long-lasting transportation and a separate enrollment issue with families continuing to attend Massway for years to come.
Thank you very much. That was the time. Thank you.
Thanks.
There will be, oh. Thank you all very much for speaking. There will be time available at the end of the meeting also for more public comments. Before we move on to the approval of the minutes, Stella? Are you Stella? Yes, I'd like to welcome Stella Pellet Shore, who is the newly-elected student representative to the school board, to come up and join us. Come take your seat. I would move on to the approval of the minutes from May 15th, 2024. Can I have a motion? Denise?
Motion to accept the minutes from May 15th.
Thank you. And a second, Gianna? Are there any corrections?
Just one. Page three of four, section eight, discussion action items, is simply a typo of list of policies for a frisk read, just a frisk to first. That's it.
Any other? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes? Six to zero, student rep in favor. Good job. Okay, we have moved now to district announcements.
Good evening, everyone. David Goldsmith, MoHaramit. We have come to the end of our year. Of course, we have the rest of this week and next week, and we're doing all of the regular things that we do at the end of the year. I have them all listed out for you, so I won't go through all of them. We did just have our Day of Water last Friday. It was fantastic. We had about 35 stations at school run by teachers, family, community members, fishing game, UNH professors, you name it. People were there doing wonderful things all about water for our students, which was really great. We had fire departments. We had, we had everybody. It was awesome. All of the other events are here, and we're excited to wrap up our year with our students, and we're obviously getting ready for next year as well. Questions, comments, thoughts, jokes?
David, when, oh, you have them on paper. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, is it on the paper?
I was just going to ask when the fourth grade celebration was going to be.
Oh, yeah, that's on the paper.
Good evening. Misty Lowe, Massway School. I want to point out that I brought a packet to share with all of you. Hopefully, it's at your seat, but it had two updated enrollments for you. When we had our workshop last Tuesday night, there was an air specifically in third grade, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that Massway is thankful for the additional third-grade teacher that you approved in order to honor class-size guidelines, and I wanted to be sure that was demonstrated on enrollment. Otherwise, there's two because one's with 4K and one's with 5. Like David, I also handed out dates, important dates, and I'll just say quickly, we had a phenomenal annual art show last week. It was a tremendous turnout. That was Thursday night. And then the community came out big again on Friday night for Mayfair. So it's just such a pleasure to work in the Massway School community, and the amount of parents that participate in those community events is really incredible. Otherwise, if you have any questions for me, a lot of fun things. a lot of fun things happening. Senior Walk is very special. That will be happening tomorrow. Step-Up Day to the Middle School Friday, Field Day Monday. A lot of things happening. And then I also gave you an invitation, if you were interested in joining us for the fourth-grade celebration. That has specific dates and times. Questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Sullivan, Middle School. Just want to highlight a couple of great things we've had going on the last few weeks. We had our first-ever Arts and Humanities Night. It was an amazing evening here at the middle school. We had all our Unified Arts, World Language, Music all presenting. We had N68 Hours. We had an amazing evening. It was just a nice-- It wasn't just an art show. It wasn't just a concert. We had a full evening all throughout the middle school. It was a wonderful night. We had Monday night. We had our last concert of the year. We have a ton during the year here, and our last one was Monday. It was the chorus concert. It was a great evening. And last night, right in this space, I met with probably 40 to 50 incoming fourth-grade parents, and it was well-attended. A lot of good questions. There were some nerves from fourth-grade parents, and I'm hoping that we can help them get ready for the transition. One big thing tomorrow, we're having our senior walk. Our seniors will be coming up here from the high school, walking through the middle school. They'll come through here. And all our kids and staff will get to congratulate them and give them some recognition, some well-deserved recognition. And it's an amazing transformation from when they left here four years ago. We see them tomorrow, and it's amazing. It's one of my favorite days here, so-- And I have other dates, just like David and Misty. I'll hand them out. And any questions for me? Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, principal at the high school. Mr. Bacon, you stole some of my thunder. So I was going to announce our new student school board representative, so Stella Pellet Shore. She might not be able to stay all evening, just in case if she needs to get up and go. I know she stole his finals to prepare for him, just letting you know that. But we're very excited. I wanted to give her a second if she wanted to say hi just really quick or anything. We haven't gone over-- Like, we usually would go over and meet and talk about different things that she would announce. So just in case, or if there's things she can think of to announce, that's great. But did you want to say anything right now?
Perfect. I just want to say that I'm so excited to be here. I've attended a few school board meetings in the past to present, but I've never, obviously, gotten a chance to sit here and be a part of this group. And I think I'm very, very excited to see more of this. I'm really interested in the community and engaging more deeply with it. So I'm so hopeful and excited to see how-- like, the change that we're going to be able to make this year. So I'm very excited to work with you all. I'm open to answering any questions. And that's all from me right now.
She's very engaged in the high school and the community, involved in a lot of different things, so I'm excited that she was able to take this opportunity. And then next, I just wanted to talk about graduation. So I have been talking to our local meteorologist every single day for the past couple of days. Today, his suggestion was if we moved graduation back a half an hour. We actually had a pretty clear window. It's cleared up a lot since this past weekend. We've been watching it for the last 10 days. So graduation will commence at 5:30. There have been a couple announcements that went out today. They're going to go out tomorrow and on Friday also. What that means-- And students have been sent this already, and we'll go over it at graduation rehearsal tomorrow-- Students need to be at the school by 4:15. The procession will start at 5:15. It takes about 15 minutes to walk down and get them seated, so the ceremony starts exactly at 5:30. The whole idea also is to have us finished well before 8, because that's when they think it might start raining, and is around 8 o'clock. So I just wanted to announce those times. We are opening seating when school ends, so if people want to start coming to save seats at 3 o'clock when the rest of the students are leaving the building, that's okay. But open parking is at 4:15. So the entire campus is open to parking at 4:15 once the seniors have gotten there. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
I just want to take a moment to commend Becca for going with the flow in terms of the weather. It's very high pressure. It's sort of like a snow day for principals, where they're trying to figure out whether it's going to happen and not happen. And she's been in close contact with a district resident who is a weather person and with me through this whole process. And on pins and needles, if you're coming, be prepared for some rain. Bring your umbrellas. But it was really important to the seniors in particular to have it on Friday, and so that's why we ultimately leaned on Friday. It went from 42% chance of rain down to 18%. So we're hoping by starting early, as Becca said, we can pull it off. But commendations to Becca for continuously monitoring and working with the seniors to make sure they have a great day. In addition, the kids have had great experiences at the high school today. They're at Canterbury Lake. Last week, they had-- Well, this week, actually. They had a field day on campus, sort of like, you know, we're talking about kindergarten and the excitement around kindergarten. There's two places where parents get super excited, kindergarten and the senior year. So the kids have had a really great experience thanks to a lot of extra effort by Rebecca. They had fried dough. They had all kinds of--
Ice cream. They had a mechanical bull. What is it? The jump house?
Bouncy house. All on campus.
Obstacle course.
So the kids had a great, a great week thanks to the organization of the high school administration.
And Katie Johnson. She is the senior advisor. She has done a lot of the heavy work on that. She's been amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to board reports.
All right, I'll go first. I was waiting to see what was left. There's just so much-- So much happens at this time of year, and I was fortunate to attend a number of things. The music band, Palooza, which was so fun, out on the middle school field, the art shows, both at the high school, Masst Way, MoHerram-- The Mouth of the River Coffee House, the science fair. So just a lot of stuff that really-- A lot of events that really demonstrate the passion that our, you know, our faculty and our students have for everything that happens here. I know a lot of work goes into it. And I would like to mention, where we have a lot of parents here, that the high school has a wonderful student publication called Mouth of the River. It actually won-- Let's see if I get this right-- The New Hampshire Press Association, first place for general excellence in student journalism. So-- And anyone can subscribe to it. It's also on-- It's on Facebook under-- Just Mouth of the River, if you Google that. But you can actually subscribe annually. It comes out four times a year. You learn a lot, and so I highly recommend that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Brian.
Just wanted to thank the staff at the SAU, the staff in the district, and Andrea Vanoyen especially for her performance during Jim's retirement celebration that we had. Music was incredible. It was a great turnout by everybody. The food was excellent. It was just really, really a positive send-off for Dr. Morris after 12 years in the district. So I'm glad he could walk away with some hardware at the end. And we're now in the-- Doing these meetings in the Morris Recital Hall, which is good to have and nice to know.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. David Goldsmith had referred to the Day of Water, and I was one of the folks helping out with that one. That was interesting, the fact that I was assisting eighth graders just as backup while they were teaching a watershed model and talking about vernal pools. Watching everybody stare at each other, paralysis when kindergartners came up and nobody knew what to do was great, because I think the kindergartners just had to snack, and they weren't thinking that way. But they did an excellent job, and it was a wonderful thing all around. I unfortunately didn't get to see everybody's ulcers things, but it was a good day to be had at MoHerramette. The next thing to talk about was that I attended the science showcase, and I wanted to give a shout-out to all the students for all the hard work there and for the teachers and the classes that were there. It was John Bromley with Environmental Science, Nate Oxner with AP Bio, and Celeste Best with Anatomy and Physiology. I spoke to many of the students, and some of them were actually having presentations regarding things that are my expertise. And so they handled me grilling them excellently well. You should be very proud of them. And that's all I have for today.
Denise covered Band of Palooza and the high school band guitar concert, which were both very excellent. But I think we had girls tennis. No, you didn't do your full update. And now I'm like-- Girls tennis came, and they won their second consecutive state championship. And there was another-- And I am-- There's another one that won something. Unified volleyball came in second place, and that's really exciting as well. And then the middle school festival and jazz bands-- So the festival bands, their middle school concert band, traveled to a competition in Hershey in mid-May, and they won each of their categories for school size, and they won best overall concert band and best overall middle school jazz band. So that was really exciting for those kiddos who come in before school and after school to work on their performance pieces. So I wanted to give them a mention. And that's it.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to assistant superintendents.
Just a few things to update you all on. The teacher workshop days on June 17th, 18th, the 20th, and the 21st, they have been planned. The 17th and 18th really focuses on district-wide work and cross-building work, but there is also building work that's going to be done, collaborative work with faculty. And then the 20th and the 21st, I'm still working with the digital learning specialists to-- On the different offerings. And there'd be a variety of different offerings. Some of them will be in person. Some of them will be online for faculty to engage in, and that information will be sent to faculty shortly. I just want to remind everyone that ESY and REACH starts on July 8th and goes to August 1st. It's a Monday-through-Thurs program. And if anyone has any questions about REACH, they can reach out to me. And if you have questions about ESY, please reach out to Kathryn Ford. And then I just wanted to let everybody know that the wellness committee-- Kelly is not here today. I wanted to let people know the wellness committee met, had our last meeting this past week, and we talked about the first community dinner. So mark your calendars. We're going to have our first community dinner on October 10th next year, and it's going to be focused on wellness. And it's our wellness committee that's going to be hosting it. And we're going to have a variety of different community vendors and people there to share information with families about what's available in the community around health and wellness.
And ESY is the extended school year?
Yes, ESY is extended school year. Families would have already been notified if their students are participating.
Okay. Thank you very much. Second-to-last superintendent's report, please. Dr. Morris.
Thank you, Matt. So the most important thing I would want to say from a personal perspective and a professional perspective is thank you to all of you as board members, and thank you to the community. The retirement celebration last week was amazing. I mean, it was just truly awe-inspiring and humbling, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciated everything about it. Everything about it. So thank you so much. So then I'll just shift to the more important issue of the evening, and just why our parents are here, which is the kindergarten issue that we queued up during the workshop. So there's really two aspects to this discussion. There's a short-term and a long-term component to this. So in the immediate sense, it is the discussion we've been having regarding the 17 students that we would send to Masst Way. The parents have been amazing in terms of providing feedback. Clearly, they showed up tonight, but they also have generated a number of really great emails that were insightful, and I want to thank all of you for being present here tonight and also at the workshop. So, you know, the issue that we're facing in the immediate sense is we do have a kindergarten enrollment that was unexpectedly large at MoHerramette, like a whole classroom large. And so the recommendation was made, and it was articulated in one of the presentations, to identify children who do not have siblings at the school, who have not started at MoHerramette yet, and place them at Masst Way, because that is where the space was. The board, in setting this up, was very, very great at putting the children's interest at heart in terms of hiring an extra kindergarten teacher and an extra para. So the issue in front of us doesn't involve staffing. We now have the staffing, because you already authorized it. So the question really before the board in the short term is, is that the best solution for these 17 children? Or is a better solution to look at the alternatives that presented during the workshop? And those alternatives included placing art out into the wing and using the art room as a classroom. And that has downsides. Another alternative was to-- In the immediate sense is that's one year. That's a one-year solution. If the enrollment occurred in the second year, like it occurred this year, then music would go on a cart. would go on a cart. And then ultimately, you know, we could see a three-year window where we can count the live births. And I want to commend Heather for the work that she did in analyzing the live births and the data and sharing that with all of you. And then an additional option was to bring in a modular classroom again. Initial prices on the modular classroom, because this has been a fast and furious data collection week for administration, and every time that we had the latest, I would send it out to you, including this afternoon. So the modular that Dave Tardy had originally got a price on was based on what happened in Portsmouth, and they were able to find a used double-wide modular. And the cost then was about $200,000. But since the workshop, Dave Tardy has been working diligently to try to figure out what the real cost to us would be, because a 450-square-foot classroom is completely inadequate to use for our children. So I asked Dave to look at what a 750 to 850-square-foot classroom would cost. And, you know, as you saw this afternoon, if you were able to open up your email, it's closer to $300,000. And that would include bringing it in, setting it up, and hooking it up to utilities and so forth. So the discussion, the immediate discussion for the school board is, you know, where do you want to go in the short term? Which is not to ignore the long-term solution, because a short-term solution is just that. It's a bridge to something better. And what I would want to add to this discussion, but not confuse the issue, is you can't do the short-term solution without thinking about the long-term solution. Right now, as we said, Moharamet is overcrowded without the additional 17 kindergarten students. And I think you heard that from one of the speakers tonight as well. We have crammed programming into a school. If you think of Moharamet as excellent school, excellent teachers, wonderful, you know, parent community, and the students are great. But we've crammed all the programming into a building that was not designed to have the programming it has in it right now. So you think about the tutoring program and the special ed program and the paraeducators who are working with students. All of that is happening, but it's happening in spaces that were never designed to provide that kind of programming. So you do have a longer-term issue, and I want to say this, beyond the 17 students, which is why in the emails this afternoon, I was able to give you the pricing for adding physical, physically adding classrooms to Moharamet. Roughly speaking, three classrooms is $3 million. I know it's a little bit less than that, but I'm not going to open my email and read the exact number. And then six classrooms, which would be a tower, if you will, two stories, would be about $6 million. There are other ways of thinking about that, but for now, I'll just leave that. If you decide to do something different, or even if you decide to stay the course and have the 17 children go to Masway, you can't ignore there's a facilities problem at Moharamet that you're facing, that you have to address in the next, you have to address in the next three years. So setting up the short term, you have to remember that that is exactly what it is. And the reason I'm saying this so firmly is, the last time we had a modular at Moharamet, it was supposed to be short-term, and it lasted nearly 20 years. And by the time we took it out, as David would tell you, he was curious as to whether it would fall apart. So, you know, when we're having this discussion, it is about these 17 families, but it's also about all the families at Moharamet. And how do we take a building that was never designed for expansion? This is one of the elements that we have when we talk about Moharamet, is the way it was designed initially makes it incredibly difficult to expand. We have conceptual solution to that. So just queuing this up for your discussion, short-term, you've got to be thinking absolutely in short-term as a bridge to long-term. So that's how I would queue it up, Matt, and I turn it back to you.
Okay. So I'm open to discuss this in any way that you want. We can take it one option at a time. I do think that, I agree with Jim, that it's definitely two conversations, but they're both, I would say, equally important. What we do for next fall, but that's also going to impact what we do for five years from now. So if anyone has any thoughts?
It's just going to bring David up to the podium, only because I suspect that he'll be part of this conversation as we go through. And rather than have him jump up and down, we'll just have him locate there in case the board wants to engage him in the conversation.
Sure. So do you want to work, let's work through the options, the options that Jim laid out, and we'll just start with the modular option. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I, so, in some ways, I feel like that would buy us the most time. Because looking at the long-term, I completely agree that we need to expand Moharamet. The reality is, a bond needs to be approved, and we don't have a crystal ball. Hopefully, we'd get approved the first time, it might not. So the thing with the modular is, if we did a double-wide, you know, two, my understanding is two classrooms. It would buy us more time in case it took longer for the long-term solution. However, it's definitely money that we're already, you know, could be put towards a long-term solution. And secondly, the timeline of 17 weeks means that we would still have to start the school year with another short-term solution. So for those reasons, you know, I'm leaning away from the modular solution. I feel like ideally, it would be better, but I just don't know, given the expense of it and the fact that it would still, we'd still have to start the school year with something else.
I actually agree with Denise as far as on the modulators. I just think it's a lot of money for a short-term problem that we won't even receive. I mean, I'm sure 17 weeks is the good side of the guess, rather than the bad side. But more concerning for me, besides the cost, is the security issue. That's the exact reason why we got rid of them in the last time, is because they are a major security issue. I don't like having kids outside the building. Those walls are paper-thin, and it all sounds great until something bad happens. And then I have no, there's no way I can explain to a parent why we made a decision to put kids at risk, or even staff, for that matter. And I just can't vote for anything that would put kids, kids and staff at risk in this district. And I think modulators are just the wrong direction for this. We need to find a, we need to find a solution for now, and then we have to find a long-term solution. Like I said, it is two different conversations, but one we can solve today, which is a short-term, and the other one we can, we have to solve, you know, with much more conversation and with probably the people within the district too. We really have to get them involved, because if you're going to ask to float a $6 million bond, that's a lot of work. I mean, look, we had to go through this to get this building, and we're going to have a, I really want to see some more trends too, as far as, I don't think, I really don't, just from my experience in education, yes, we're having some increased enrollment, but I don't think for the long-term, we're going to have increased enrollment. And I would hate to put a $6 million addition onto a building to have empty rooms. Now, I feel those rooms could be used because of the special needs, I mean, the special ed department that has grown, and because of COVID, we've had a great increase in special ed. And the services that are required now by the state require us to put them in rooms and do things like that. So, I mean, if I, given a long-term choice, I think the addition will probably get used regardless, but I just can't, I just cannot hang my hat on modulators. So I think for the short term, we could probably put that, you know, just for the immediate short term, we can put a special, choice of the principal, whatever special he wants, into that open area, just for the time being. But this problem is not going to be fixed quickly. This is at least a one-year problem, if not two to three years down the road. So let's just buy two cents.
I'm not going to repeat what Denise and Brian said, because I do really agree, I would not vote to add modulators for, number one, would be safety, and two, I think it's throwing good money away for a short term that isn't going to be the best investment for the district. Schools are so much more than just classrooms. And what schools are asked to do, and what teachers and therapists and practitioners of the healing art and special educators and interventionists all do in the spaces they need to do them is not going to go away. We are a well-sought-after school district. I don't know if our enrollment trends are always aligned with the state or the national trends, because we are a well-sought-after school district. And so, I mean, I, if we're going to talk about where we would vote, I wouldn't vote to add the modulators. And I think taking two to three years to make the long-term plan is appropriate and okay. I think we have some capital improvement funds set aside next year that maybe we could reallocate to looking at solving the long-term problem. And I also agree, I don't know if a $6 million addition is necessary, but I can get behind a $3 million addition for three classrooms, knowing the level of services that public schools provide students these days. And they, we educate any kiddo that walks through that door, regardless of the need, regardless of the space, regardless of the mental health. And also, I have a really hard time, from a mental health standpoint, is dividing neighborhoods and students, when we're working so hard to get students to get out of their homes, get off screens, and play in their neighborhoods, and build those critical thinking skills that come when you are in your neighborhood playing. And to think of students, two different buses in two different schools for a neighborhood, I have a really hard time getting behind. So I would really reconsider the allocation of the kindergarteners to Moharamet and using capital improvement funds set aside for maybe the Masway cafeteria addition or something. Not all of our capital improvement funds set aside next year, but some, to explore what does an addition really look like at Moharamet, and how does that come into play?
Hi. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to sit. I don't want to take people's comments yet. I just want to point out, I have a map to pass out to everybody to talk to these points about our use. I'm happy to give you my opinions on all of these options, if you'd like it. But for now, I'll just say that we absolutely could use the space of an addition now to provide the excellent education that the state expects, our community expects, I expect, our teachers expect, parents expect. We could fill those spaces immediately. If the population trends continue and we need them for class space, we would use them for that, obviously, and first and foremost. And if the trends change, as they always do, and I always say, and I was taught in my programs, that, you know, we want our facilities to be like 80% at capacity, which is a really hard thing for the public to get behind. But we always have a way to use those spaces. And so if I was told that I was having three additional classes built at Moharamet, I could fill them in an instant with exceptional programming, getting some of our most challenging needs out of substandard spaces into spaces that they deserve, to elevate the programming that our incredible staff does on a daily basis with these kids. It allowed, it would allow us flexibility, which is really what a 21st century school needs. I'll save my comments about my opinions. I'll let you all hash that out first. But let me give you the map. I, I'll tell you what it says here. I put some red dots on spaces that are not student spaces, things like my office. I give my office up, actually, as a student space every single week, as an example, but it's not technically supposed to be a student space. So I have red dots all over the place where you'll see that. I put an M for the music room, because I know you're talking about that. I wrote art where that is, so you're talking about that. I circled some spaces in green that we use for student space, but really, we never did until we had no choice. And then I put SE for special education in the two spaces that currently house all of that. That's sort of my key on the map, and I'll let you take a look at that. And then if you want to hear from me, I'm happy to give you my opinions.
So where I'm leaning is somewhat in line with what other folks have said. I really appreciate all the parents coming in and talking about the way they feel the impact their families, and I want to make sure they understand that we absolutely are hearing that. But one of the things is, is that we have to consider not only financially, but also the impact the school as a whole, beyond 17 or 18 families. And one of the things is, is that no matter, if the option is not to put it into Masway, and I know this is only effective for next year, then all the students at Moharamet will be impacted. And in a way that wouldn't happen if you put the kids in Masway for this year, and I do have a comment on that, that it could run into the second year too, is that all the programming, all the education that the kids would receive would be just as good at Masway as at Moharamet if we put the kindergarten class in Masway. With all the other options, whether it's a modular, having music on a cart, putting art on a cart, it affects everybody. And considering that my kids went through Moharamet during COVID, music on a cart, art on a cart, art in a wing at one point was suboptimal, pretty clearly. And I wouldn't want anybody, any child to experience that, even though absolutely everybody did a phenomenal job with what the resources we had. It definitely had an impact. And if we have an option to not have that impact, I think it's something we should seriously consider. As Denise was pointing out, there'll be a delay, I would say, for at least half of the school year for the modular. Having also had a child in that modular the last year that it was up and got transitioned out of it into a highly crowded Moharamet afterwards, I know that some of that was simply the fact that the modular was past its functional lifetime, and that's something I would consider. But there were, there were some issues with it, security, as Brian was mentioning, but also there were some plumbing problems. And it's one of the things that I'm concerned about, is that we have our approximately $300,000 estimate. But that's a really rosy picture with the idea that there's nothing wrong with the electrical or the water or the subject that's underneath. And considering that we did have problems with that at the end of its lifespan, I don't want to bank on that. So it's something that I just want to consider with those. And then my second part is, is that I am concerned, based upon some of the projection numbers alone, on just the birth data coming in for the next kindergarten class, that one does seem to be large as well. I didn't look at it too carefully to see like how much that affected if we'd have to bump up another classroom, because I know that we've got, what is it, 16 plus 20? We have three, six classrooms? Is that what we have total? That we would be at capacity next year, and it'd be possible that we'd have to have another one next year, and then, of course, we're right back to where we started. So I am aware of that. So that's something to take in consideration too. But I would definitely say that anything we choose is absolutely contingent upon selling the idea to the community that we absolutely have to put that addition in at Moharamet. There is absolutely no choice. Otherwise, we're running into this again and again. At the time, I think probably the smaller one would probably be more palatable to people, because there's other things that are coming down the pipe that we have to pay for as well, particularly if we are forced to do the modular, particularly the fact that we did kind of, we kept, keep on putting Masway in the cafeteria on a back burner, and that there's an equity problem that starts coming up with that. But those are the ways, that's the way I'm looking at it. Currently, as I'm standing here before we hear more from David and Dr. Morris, is I am leaning towards the original plan of Masway, but with the idea that we could actually address that problem a bit down the road by redistricting. So to me, it would be doing a temporary solution and redistricting, because of course, I absolutely agree, splitting apart kids in the same neighborhood is pretty suboptimal. And I know that on paper, it looks silly, but I definitely understand that everybody here is understanding why it's happening, that we're trying to minimize the problem. But I think that it's, we've got a multiple-step issue here. I hope that was even vaguely clear as I was speaking, as I was thinking. Thank you.
Are we sticking to modulators, or are we moving on?
So I think where we are is, we, and you guys can feel free to contradict me here, but I think that the idea of a Moharamet expansion is necessary. And so the discussion there would be more about how we make that happen. And that's a great discussion to have, and we can have it in a couple of minutes. But I think right now, we should focus on the issue at hand, which is the kindergarten class for next year. And it does sound like modulators are not a big popular decision.
So I will tee off the encore transition or movement versus the fifth class at Masway. And there are sort of two things that are rolling around in my brain simultaneously. One is trying to come up with an assessment of the impact to the 17, 18 families and what that impact will really look like after, about a month after the school system, school year starts, and sort of those first bit of nerves and acclimation occurs, because it's always scarier on the front side. And so trying to weigh that versus the impact to a much larger student population with reduced UA experience, whether that be music or art. And so it may be a smaller touch point over a larger population, but how does that weigh out? And I don't have a good answer for that. But I think it is pertinent. The data-driven side of me is sitting and looking at the birth rates. And knowing that we have eight classes of kindergarteners this year, there is every chance that we're going to need eight classes of kindergarteners next year, which means that if we put one of the encores on the cart or in the wing to accommodate this year's, in terms of straight-out, flat-out equity, we cannot put two UAs out of their home at Moharamet and have Masway running at 100%. It is not okay. We will have to move those kiddos to Masway. So we either bite the bullet and we do it now, or we pray and hope that we somehow end up with seven classes next year. And within this year, all of those kiddos at Moharamet are going to have a lessened experience. You can't teach dance, which is part of the music curriculum, in a classroom. You can't. You can't get the xylophones out and lay them out so those kiddos can learn that. That is part of that curriculum. You can't do pottery in the wing. You need a sink. You need a place for kids to wash their hands. These are all limitations that will happen with the curriculum. And so I kind of want to pull up our big kid pants and say, it really sucks for the 17, and I get that, I really get that. But in terms of the larger impact to the students we have, it is better to put them at Masway. Matt? So I appreciate everything everybody's saying. It's definitely not an easy decision whatsoever. I've really heard the parents, particularly not so much from the adjustment, which it's always an adjustment when you have a new experience. More from the logistical, I really heard from parents that work and say, you know, I already was banking on my neighbor being able to take my child off the bus, or, you know, just those working parent, having been a working parent, knowing how complicated that all is. So I really heard that. So, and I hear what you're saying, Heather, totally about, you know, this isn't just a one-year problem. But I'm going to throw in a whole other possibility, which is, if we do the art, music on a cart, whatever, and I, as I said in the workshop, if that's a decision that the board made, I would leave it up to administrators to decide which it would be. I'm not going to choose whether it should be art or music or anything else for that matter. But if we did that for one year, we could also look at the possibility of fast-tracking this whole idea of, call it Princeton model, of the early elementary and a lower elementary and upper elementary for the following year, which I understand would be crazy and an awful lot to do in a short period of time, but it would be another way to handle the situation. Rather than moving this whole group to Masway, knowing it's only working for this year, and we're going to have, we're going to be in
for this year, and we're going to have, we're going to be in square one again for next year anyway. And then we would be right back, and we move this class over to Mastway, and we have this, another large kindergarten class coming in, we're going to have to do something with those kids. We're either going to have to still put art or music on a cart or do something else. So to me, I would personally think it would be less disruptive, even though I hear what you're saying about the experience, I get it, of doing either the, keeping the children at Moheramet and then looking at a different possibility for the following year.
The, I don't like poking holes, so I want to be supportive. But neither building at this point is big enough to run the Princeton model. You would need three grades, and if we have K1 and 2 all come in at eight classes, which is what the next three years look like, neither building is big enough to house them. Because Mastway has 20, and Moheramet currently 6 of 16.
I would ask respectfully that a decision like the Princeton model, which is enormous, that's a district-changing decision, regardless of my opinion of that at the end, this district has always made very thoughtful, long-term decisions like that through the collective experience of the community. And I think that would be a decision that would be really worthy of a committee, parent involvement, researchers, teachers, everybody. To do that well, if that was the decision after all of that time, would require an enormous amount of time, energy, thought, philosophical, pedagogical shifts, all sorts of things that we could surely do if that was the will of the entire community once that whole process was done. But I think I would really, I would be very much against that as a short-term decision for this problem, whether, again, if that's something that, you know, you all want to make a committee and really go into, I think that would take a long time, because that impact, we're talking about impacting everybody, that impacts everybody in some very big ways. And I've taught in districts that use that model. I'm not trying to even throw shade at the model, I'm just saying, this is, I don't think this is the time to make that choice.
Yeah, I don't, I know that you agree with that, Brian. I don't want to get sidetracked with this discussion, because it is a giant decision, and Heather's correct, neither of the schools is big enough. So a Moheramet extension would be necessary for that model to begin with. So for the task at hand, and to keep us on pace, I think we should stick to the kindergarteners that we're talking about right now. What do we do?
So David, it's your school. How do we fix this problem for this year? What's your, what's your opinion? You said you're willing to offer it, so what's your opinion?
Well, first, I would say, I think everyone's right, in a way. This is a very tough decision and situation. I think families who are talking about the impact to art and music have a point. I think families who are talking about their personal situations have a point as well. I look at this sort of thing from the aspect of us being a community. That's what we preach, and that's what we teach, and that's what we talk about. And we are, if we continue down the procedure of the policy that we've used in the past, we are selectively choosing families to impact, as opposed to us all sharing a piece of that impact, because we're a community. And we're a public school, and we have lots of people, and anyone who moves to our town, we educate them regardless. And there are times when we're in tricky situations, and I think if we are true to our philosophies, then we would all get together and share in solving that. So I think we keep people at Moheramet, and we figure it out. When we have, in the past, used this procedure, it's never been with kindergarteners. It's been with families who move into the district midway through the year, when we're up and running and our classrooms are full, and we've shared from Moheramet to Mastway and Mastway to Moheramet. There was a time, three years ago, when we were going to have to do this, and the board hired, voted to have me hire an additional kindergarten teacher specifically for this issue, because over the summer, our enrollments spiked in both buildings. And we had the space, and we did that, and that's my current second grade of four classes. We could move this group to Mastway, we could still have enrollment spike this summer. To me, it's a very selective, painful decision, that people are correct, it's not a neighborhood, it is individual people being picked out for reasons that I was a part of deciding, no sibling, 40-minute bus ride, and I stand by those choices. But it impacts a whole host of people, and as we are aware, they have lots of children, which is a wonderful thing for our district, but it means 15 years of impact. We can't bring them back, because our class sizes, as in our policies, which are wonderful, would never give us the space to bring 17 or 18 students back into a three-grade anywhere else. So if they're going to be at Mastway, they're going to be at Mastway. And I think that's exceptionally impactful on an individual level, rather than us as a community, being a community. I can't get behind modulators, for the reasons you talked about, Brian, and other people did as well. I think as an administrator in this district, as a taxpayer in this district, as a parent in this district, I can't see that much, that amount of money being taken from other buildings and their facility needs to do this short-term solution. I also can't, as an administrator, I don't have an answer for a family who says, the last time you took these modulators down, it was because of safety, and now you've placed my children there, and I don't want them there. And I don't know how to say, okay, I'll choose someone else, or tough, I hope it's going to be okay. Like, that just doesn't work for me. Dr. Morris?
So all of you know that I started out as a teacher, teaching art. And so the reason that I've spent my career advocating for the arts is because of the experience I had as an art teacher. When I started out, it was clearly not Oyster River. It was a school system that had very little resources. And when I describe it, I describe it as an Appalachia-type school district, where families lived in homes without running water, and they had dirt floors. And I was the only art teacher in a 400-square-mile district. When I taught art, I taught it on a cart in six different schools. So when I think about the programming we have in our district, it's just truly a miracle of a public school commitment to the arts. And we see that in our concerts, and we see that in the elementary art show that we had at Mastway, and the senior art show that we had at the high school. And so there's nothing more dear to me than a robust art program, because historically in our country, the arts have been dismissed. And that's not the case in this district. So I absolutely hear, Heather, because I know what the compromises are, when we think about putting music on a cart or art in the wing. I know those, I live those, I understand those limitations. But we, when I think about my experience, and I think about the excellent teachers we have at Moheramet, and the compromises they'll make, they won't make a compromise in content. You know, the elements and principles of art are universal. What they'll do is they'll get to that content through different devices. So whether it's clay, whether it's plasticine, they can do plasticine and still have the same experience of three-dimensional creation. They can get three-dimensional creation through construction of sticks. There's a whole host of ways that our teachers can address the elements and principles of both disciplines. It will not be the same as what happens at Mastway. But if it's a two-year compromise to get to a place where we have a permanent solution, then that's the compromise. Like David, I have a hard time getting my head around the modular. When it was here, every single year that it was here, the board was pounding on me to get rid of it, Denise lived through that, where, you know, when are we going to get rid of it? When are we going to get rid of it? When are we going to get rid of it? And finally, as Gianna alluded to, it was, there was no choice. We had to get rid of it, because it was no longer suitable for children. This is why I keep on emphasizing short-term, long-term solutions. So I am in the same place as David. I think we do have to bite the bullet and create a pathway to a long-term solution. And I would rely on our art and music teachers to do exactly what I did at the beginning of my career, and figure out ways to make sure that the discipline they're teaching is being taught, whether they have xylophones or clay, is not necessarily material. What's material is what is the, what are the standards that we want to teach, and can those teachers teach them? I have absolute faith that they can. They will absolutely have different experiences than the Mastway children, but they won't have different content. And I think that's the point I'm trying to make.
Oh, I concur. I have complete confidence in all of my teachers, my art teacher and my music teacher, in this case, to help our students have wonderful experiences. There have been years, in my seven years, when our kiln was broken, and Moheramet didn't have a clay experience. Mastway might have, I don't know. You know, those are, those small changes in programs in the short term happen all the time, whether it's, I don't mean to give a trite example of something that's broken versus being in the wing, but the philosophy and the foundation of those experiences will be excellent. Our teachers are excellent, and our kids are fabulous, and they'll, they'll have a great program. I think the key, and I support what Dr. Morris is saying, and I think what you're saying, is the, the building has to happen. If the building doesn't happen, we're having a very different conversation. If the voters of Oyster River, if we don't communicate this properly, and if we don't go out and, and meet with constituents and talk about this program, then we end up having to talk modulators, potentially, which is lousy, for all the reasons we've talked about. I think the building has to happen. And we'll use those spaces regardless of our small up and downs in our population. But in the short term, art, music can, can function, kids can have great experiences. We can still have chorus, we do that in the gym already. And, you know, the reason we've been talking about three years is because my current second grade, which is four, moves to the middle school in two years. And so we would then have that additional classroom space from there. To me, that's a compromise for our community, better than the alternatives.
If I could also piggyback Renee's comment in relation to redirecting resources, you know, we very clearly administratively recognize that the redirection of resources is critical to be able to move forward in the immediate sense. And so Amy and Suzanne and I have been going through the budget that you already allotted to related to the Mastway school, that we have $250,000 in the budget. The engineering and architectural fees for that have come in incredibly low, and we've already taken care of the furniture needs. So we can use funds from that account to move forward in doing the immediate needs for Moheramet, which could be, you have a proposal in your packet for, I think it's $42,400 to do the conceptual work for Moheramet. But what we're also, we've also asked Bowen to do, Bowen Construction, today, is what would it cost to do the same amount of work for Moheramet that we're doing at Mastway related to the cafeteria experience, to actually, what, what would the figure be for a real architectural and engineering study for the school? And can we fit that into the budget? We don't know yet, because we just asked him this morning to try to go in that direction. So a lot of the longer-term issues, we, you still have plenty of time to ferret out, but the immediate, the immediate issue is, is the one before us, and that is the 17 children that we made the decision to move to Mastway, and can we keep them at Moheramet by redirecting our resources in art and/or music? And that's really fundamentally the decision we have to make, hopefully, tonight, because, you know, we have classroom teachers, I'm going to start with the classroom teachers, whatever decision the board makes, then we have to marshal those resources, those teachers, who's impacted, finding time for them to empty classrooms, repopulate classrooms, you know, get ready for the new school year. They weren't anticipating spending their summer moving stuff and redirecting their resources. And also to give the families here as much notice as possible to either alleviate their concern or say, we heard you, but we're going to stay the course. So we, we, this is where we're at tonight, and I don't know that if, that you're ready to make a decision, but I would hope that you would make the decision, at least on that small piece, so then we can continue to work on the intermediate and long-term piece.
I did want to address, because I didn't address, the fact that there is a compromise by putting encore on a cart. However, I have been in education for 26 years, I've been a parent, teacher, and administrator, where at times, we've had to put an encore or Unified Arts on a cart. And although I don't know the Moheramet teachers as well as David and Jim, and it's not my job, I do know teachers, and I know educators, and I know communities, and they do not compromise on student experiences. If anything, they are creative and thoughtful, and they think outside the box, and they make sure students get what they want students to get, and have experiences that they expect students to have. And to me, equity doesn't mean the same, in that they won't have the same exact experience or learning space as Mastway when they have a full classroom, but they will have an equitable experience in the curricula around the Unified Arts, even if it's in a hallway or in a cart or all the other creative ways that teachers find and communities inside schools find to make sure students have valuable experiences. So I have, I know it's not ideal, but I don't think it's as harmful as removing students from different neighborhoods and putting them in different schools. I think it's not ideal, but it's, it's a less harmful option.
Matt? I do have a question, Dr. Morris, as far as what just occurred to me, is like, oh, we're creating a new class, so is, are you also going to need to move budget around for additional furniture, classroom, you know, because it is, it's an, it's an additional classroom.
So, thanks, Denise. In terms of classroom furniture, we have some in storage, but the reality is, we would still use some of the $250,000 to make sure that David had what he needed for the classroom to be outfitted the way it should be outfitted. A kindergarten classroom is much different than a third and fourth grade classroom. They need workspaces and, and a whole host of play experiences, so they, they learn through socialization. And so the space that, the things we need for a kindergarten are much more robust, necessarily, than the things we need for a fourth grade. So, David?
Misty and I have already talked, you know, as we are preparing for these meetings, about, they're having to create that class. So those resources are already in play, and we've already talked about ways that we would share, as we do with all things collaborate. So I don't, I can't speak exactly to the business side that Amy and Jim do, but that class is already being created, and it would just be at Moheramet rather than at Mastway.
I have a question about that $250,000. Where, where's that coming from?
That's the amount of money that the board voted to set aside for the architectural, engineering work at the Mastway cafeteria. But it's timely. It's the money, the $250,000 is the money the board set aside for the architectural and engineering studies at Mastway. As it turns out, those costs are far lower than when we, what we thought they would be during budget development time. So we have resources from that account without impacting Mastway that we can apply to this issue.
So we can still do the architectural stuff for Mastway and create this kindergarten classroom?
Yes, for sure. Because we have harder numbers today than we did during budget development season.
Okay. My other question would be, to Heather's point, what is the likelihood, and how do we handle this if next year, it's the same problem? we handle this if next year it's the same problem? Oh. Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, if, if one encore is moved out, that encore would be out for at least two years. Because this current class of kindergarteners of four would be for first grades, we would need that space for two years. If the additional kindergarten, if the following year also needed to be four, then the next encore would come out. The year after that, the current second grade goes to the middle school and a class would open up. So an encore could go back. If the, well, of course, we, that's the what?
That's the pop year in the birth rate. That's where it goes up by 10.
Well, this goes to the long-term solution, which is that when we took those modulators down, my first year's principal, the, and I'm not criticizing anyone, we didn't, we didn't replace those two classrooms in the facility. It has been complete dumb luck until now that we haven't had an enrollment issue. Like, I don't have any control over where people move, who they are, how many kids they have, where in the district, like, it's just luck. We, as Heather said in the workshop, we can really do projections of one through 12. Kindergarten, we, we don't know. So in three years, will there be an issue? Beats me. We really need the long-term solution for that reason and that's the flexibility, Brian, that we really need, whether we use it for classrooms or whether I use it for the programming that our kids need anyway, we need the flexibility. But Matt, I would, we would start in one and then if the following year there isn't an issue and it's three classes, then it would just stay that way and we would breathe a sigh of relief and move on. And if it's not, then we would do the next solution again as a community. I, I really do, I'm going to keep saying that, I'm not trying to be sappy. I really think it is a, it is our community that works together to solve these problems and, and saying, "I'm concerned for my child and therefore you have this issue." That, that bothers me as the principal of one of our town schools. So I think we would just keep going like that. If the, if we can't sell the long-term to the voters, then, then I think we do modulators and that's, to me, that's really the selling of the long-term is really people are voting on the building or something like modulators. Because the status quo does not work for us.
So next year, are we looking at picking 17 more random families and having them go to Masway or to Mohairamit if that's the case?
We, well, yes, next, next June, if I come back to the board in April and I start giving you the enrollments of kindergarten and they're sky high again, then next June we'll be talking about how we don't have space for that additional kindergarten class and we would either move families or we would move another encore. The other piece to the moving families that I want to point out is that if these families go to Masway and we have two open spots in all of our classrooms and then a family moves in in August and they come to Mohairamit, that's lousy, right? And if things get, and, and we can't, we tried many years ago to give people like numbers, first come, first served, and you can come back, and, and that was an absolute nightmare and nobody liked that, parents, schools, nothing. This still doesn't solve the issue because we still, I, I had a new enrollment last week. I, I can't tell you what's going to happen in July or the beginning of August. So I think this moves the current issue, but the issue doesn't go away at all. And as Heather showed in the workshop, we're just kicking the issue over to Masway in a few years anyway. So then it will be Misty sitting in the seat, talking about how she's over-enrolled and overcrowded and doesn't have enough classrooms. So I, I really do think it's, I'm not going to repeat myself. I just think it's, it's tough.
So I'd like to make a motion to give the principal of the, of the Mohairamit School the option to move an encore to where he sees fit so we can fit these kids into Mohairamit.
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Brian to essentially keep the, can you restate it for me?
Keep the kids at Mohairamit by allowing Principal Goldsmith to decide what encore goes into the open area to free up a classroom for these kids.
Okay. And seconded by Renee. Do we have discussion on that motion? Okay? All in favor of that motion? Three in favor, student rep in favor. All opposed to that motion? Three. Yeah. So in this case, Jim, I'm not sure what to do.
Can we do the hands up again so Karen and I can get who voted in favor and who didn't? Who voted in favor so we can, Karen and I can make sure we get the names?
Brian and Renee and Denise and the student rep.
Okay.
Does the student rep break the tie in that case?
No. Student, this, thank you, Matt, so that our student rep knows. Your vote counts in terms of symbolism. It doesn't count in terms of actual decision-making, if that makes sense, because the role of the student rep is, is to represent the students. You can engage in every conversation and you can vote on every issue, but when it comes down to decision-making, it's the elected members of the school board who ultimately have the say. Well, a tie means it, it didn't pass. So then you should be entertaining a different motion to see if you can get a majority or if somebody's willing to change their mind.
Or we table it till we have the seven.
Would it be worth waiting for Kelly to?
You can table it till the 20th if Kelly's not here.
I'm not trying to pretend to be Kelly. Can I, just from my perspective, it would be really great to have an answer on the 20th.
On the 20th?
Yeah. I, well, first of all, I lose my teachers in person on the 18th.
Okay.
So the 20th is already a little late, but it's a whole lot better than the meeting you have in July. For me, for my staff, for these families, for everybody involved, sooner the better. If, if it's going to be at Masway, they have work to do. If it's going to be at Mohairamit, we have work to do. Bringing teachers back, all of that, we want to be able to do what's right for our, our students and our staff. So I'm not trying in any way criticize your votes today, but I would hope that the 20th would be, would be the kicker.
Just as we added a workshop in a week, can we add a meeting in a week to get it ahead of that? Because the kicker here is, is we're missing a member, but there's also some, some questions. But I, I don't want to be leaving, leaving families and, and have teachers gone. Is there a possibility we can add a meeting?
I'm looking at my schedule now. I'd have to ask the rest of the board how they felt about that. Jim, as to entertaining another motion, I think the other motion would be to keep...
Table. I meant a, a voting meeting.
You need a motion to the table.
I'm sorry. David pointed out that, I should be clarified that it would not be a workshop, it'd be a voting meeting. Are we able to do?
Correct. Yeah. That's what we're talking about. Does anyone have any thoughts on having an extra meeting between now and the 20th?
You guys just do not want me to go away. Every time I get down to two, it goes back up.
Renee, would you be able to make a meeting next Wednesday?
If it's at seven, I can make it.
Brian, would you be able to make a meeting next Wednesday?
Are you texting Kelly?
So this would, just to be clear, this would be a meeting of the, a regular meeting of the board where you would be able to make motions, not a workshop.
No, regular.
Regular meeting so that we could take a vote? Yes.
The only agenda item would be this.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, that's it.
Gianna, would you be able to make that meeting? Oh.
The only problem is the space.
We could, we can...
I just want, eighth grade celebrations next Wednesday night and I got something special lined up right for this room.
I cordially invite you all to Mohairamit.
There you go.
Thank you.
He did it before. I'm sure he's groaning in the office right now.
Gianna, can you make a meeting next Wednesday? Denise, can you make a meeting next Wednesday?
I actually don't have my calendar in front of me, but as far as I know, yes.
Okay. Heather, could you make a meeting next Wednesday? As could I. Does anyone have any objections to having an extra meeting so that we can get an answer to the parents and to the...
Matt, I, I think we need to check if you, I think it would be a good idea for you to check with Kelly. Oh.
So there's six of you, so you, you do really need to make a decision while you do have a quorum and if Kelly can make it, that's fantastic, but if she can't, then...
If she can't, we're going to be deadlocked. I mean, I mean, I can't speak for everyone. I can tell you I'm not changing my vote. That's all I can say. So, I mean, if Kelly can't make the extra meeting, I don't know that there's, unless someone is on the fence and might change their mind.
What we can do then is table the motion with no meeting in sight. If we are able to have the extra meeting, we will. If not, we will vote on it on the 20th.
Here you go.
Which Kelly will be at the 20th.
So you do need a motion to table to the next meeting.
Okay.
And that way you're not being date-specific. In the meantime, we'll contact Kelly to see if she can make it. And if she can't, then it goes to the 20th.
Okay. Can I have a motion to table the decision from Brian?
Motion to table till the next meeting.
To the next regular meeting.
Next scheduled meeting.
Yep. And a second? Okay. Denise? All in favor? Six in favor, student rep in favor. I apologize that we were not able to come to a decision tonight, but it is important that I think all of the board members have their say and I think that, I just, I'm sorry. I know that that's not a great, no answer is not a good answer.
But maybe, oops.
I turned up the microphone. We'll move on to the business administrator.
I don't have any report this evening.
And we'll move on to the very first student representative report. So this would just be if you have any dates to announce, you, and you don't need to lean into the microphone, just talk into it.
Okay. So as of now, I currently do not have any dates to announce. I have not yet begun meeting with, with the student senate, student government yet. So I do not have any current dates to announce.
Okay. Thank you very much and welcome. Finance committee? Nothing? Any other?
Can I do the SBA thing?
Yes. The SBA, go ahead.
I meant to grab Gianna beforehand too, so she could do this, but then I forgot. And I, this is Jim reminding us and then I forgot to remind. So based on the timing of things, the New Hampshire School Boards Association's resolutions, I believe, are due August 1st. Yes. And so timing-wise, if there is a resolution you're interested in, you should talk to Gianna. We can sort of talk about that at the meeting on the 20th. That gives us the meeting in July to go through any language that has been proposed because it would need to be adopted, that meeting, in order to make the August 1st deadline.
Correction, the deadline is August 2nd. But yeah, so it's...
Yes, the 2nd. So Karen's got that. But that's still, I believe, before our next, our first August meeting, so we have to get it rolled up, all done on the 17th.
And I have ideas rattling around. You'll get them.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move to the...
Mr. Chair, Kelly can make next week.
One more time.
Kelly can make next week.
Okay. So then we will have a regular meeting of the school board at 7:00 PM at Mohairamit. At Mohairamit.
And Alex said he could do it.
And Alex said he could do it. Okay. So that should be streamed. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. The unanimous, keep turning it off. Sorry. The unanimous consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull out to discuss of the unanimous consent? All right. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda, including a Mohairamit maternity leave of absence request, the list of positions for affirmation of hiring for the 24, 25 school year, or MS letter of resignation, and the professional growth master plan for the 2024, 2029 school years. A second? From Heather? Any, oh, no discussion. All in favor? Six in favor, student rep in favor. Okay. The first item up for discussion is the updated facility fees schedule. I believe when we left this discussion, we were all generally in agreement with the proposal. The delay was to clear up confusion with the wording at the top of the document.
We just, we just updated the cancellation no-show fee rather than application fee.
And that has been updated. Okay.
It says the colors and the font.
Can I have a motion to approve the fee? Brian? Give me a second here. And a second? Gianna? Is there any discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor? Six in favor, student rep in favor. Excellent. I'd like to say thank you to the finance committee and to Amy and to everybody in the administrative office. That was a lot of hard work. That was a lot of extra meetings and discussion and I think you guys did a great job.
Heather had, Heather gave us a lesson in spreadsheets. She did a really good job, so.
I was at one meeting and that spreadsheet was masterful. It was brilliant. All right. The list of policies for first read and policies for deletion.
I apologize for my confusion last time. I have the right paper in front of me, so hopefully we'll do this correctly or I'll do it correctly. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds, and policy DKC, Expense Reimbursement District and Federal Funds for First Read, and the following policies for deletion. D, Federal Cash Management. DA, Fiscal and Federal Monitoring Management. D1, Allowable Use of Funds and Adherence to Uniform Grant Guidance. D2, Procurement. D3, Time Effort Reporting Oversight. D4, Conflict of Interest and Mandatory Disclosures. And D5, Inventory Management, Equipment and Supplies Purchased with Federal Funds.
A motion from Denise?
A motion from Denise? Can I have a second? Brian? Any discussion on those policies? All in favor? Six in favor, student rep in favor? All right. Excellent. I would, wondering if anyone is opposed to a four, five-minute break real quick before we invite Dr. Shapps up? Is that all right with you? Dr. Shapp? All right. We will be on, in break until 8:52. Is that all right with you? Dr. Shapp? All right. We will be on, in break until 8:52. Five, four, three. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. Robert Shapps to the podium.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here, great to be back, I should say. And I certainly appreciate the seriousness of this last discussion you had and continuation, and I appreciate the deliberation and effort on behalf of students and families as well. So tonight, I appreciate the opportunity that we are kind of marching toward my first official day, and I would like to have the opportunity just to present an overview of my entry plan, and give you a sense in the community of really how I'm thinking about this leadership transition. Before I begin, I would like to publicly thank Dr. Morris for his incredible support and collaboration over the last four, four, five months, I should say. Jim has been incredibly available. He has certainly been purposeful and included me in participating in a lot of important discussions. I've learned a lot through our conversations and collaborations, so I want to thank you. I really appreciate that. I also want to just acknowledge and thank the SAU staff, as well as our school leaders and staff members. I've had the opportunity to get to know, over the last several months, leaders at the building level and just the staff, and everybody's been quite welcoming, and I appreciate that. It's really been enjoyable to get to know people, to start unofficially toward preparing for what's coming next. So clearly, this is a pivotal moment, or important moment, in the school district's history. Obviously, every time you go through a leadership transition, people are wondering what's going to change, what's coming next. And so for me, this is an opportunity to say, here's how I've been thinking about my work, coming in as a new leader to ensure what I would say is seamless transition of leadership, and make sure that people can focus on teaching and learning for our students and families. So I start really from the 30,000-foot view, or just, you know, kind of what I say, broader aims. And for me, this will be my fourth superintendent leadership transition into a new role over 21 years. And I think I've learned a lot through that process, knowing that every system, every organization is unique and different, and so applying what I would say some core ideas is helpful, but yet, you're still experiencing the newness of entry. So for me, the larger aim is to build a foundation for success by engaging in purposeful activities. And I want to spend some time tonight just giving you a sense of what that looks like, to, in some ways, allow me to lead to, I would say, deep and systemic understanding of the school system, the strengths, the challenges, and certainly understanding the aspirations for the future. So it's really not coming in just to begin on July 1st and saying, "I'm here. Let's open schools." It's really thinking about, through the voices, through the experiences of people who are part of the system, how I can really understand this living and breathing organization. From a more practical perspective, and I would say more measurable, there are a series of objectives or goals that I'd like to accomplish this first year that I think will help build momentum and provide for some sense of continuity. And what I think is really important in terms of my relationship and in terms of co-governance with the school board is to really point to things that will be measurable, some metrics and outcomes leading to my focus. First, to work effectively with this board, to establish clear processes and practices that prioritize effective co-governance, and tonight was an example of how you work through. Obviously, through this transition, being able to sit down in the summer through a workshop with the board and to really kind of reflect upon how we'll work together is incredibly important for a new superintendent coming in. So I look forward to focusing time and energy in that area. Building meaningful relationships. Schools are about people. It's about establishing relational trust. It's about kind of really understanding everybody's roles, responsibilities, how they see the world. But more so, from my perspective, is building relationships that allows to empower the people who work here to really take ownership of how to advance the mission of the schools. And so, it's the relationship and the trust that comes with the ability to empower people to move forward for the benefit of students. Clearly, I've said this all along, the last several months, is to learn about the system. I am one coming in, there's a long history of success here, of tradition, and so how do I spend time really focusing through conversation, through observation, through review, of really getting a sense of this place? And then, in my mind, finally, the last is really understanding where the system is relative to teaching and learning in terms of program development, and understanding what is the next level of professional work for our educators? How do we kind of start to have conversations about all areas of curriculum, of program, of instruction, and how we think about that as really able to identify some specific goals and a work plan going forward? All of this, I hope, that will lead to what I would say is a seamless leadership transition. I've kind of really thought about this upcoming year by really breaking it into four, or I would say, three phases. The first has been this extended entry, pre-entry, which is unusual. Usually, you say your goodbyes, you pack up, and you unpack, and off you go. But in this case, I've had close to five months to really look from the outside in to the system and start to engage in practices that normally would start in July, and I think that's advantageous, and I've appreciated the opportunity. So I've tried to break it into, just to describe what's been going on the last five months, to talk about the really, from July 1st through October, and then November and January, and then finally, what I would say is the last phase of my first year. The connective tissue, or I'd say the underlying importance of three areas is really something I've really thought a lot about, and that's the first is to connect. To make connections with staff, with our students or families, with the board, to start to build a relationship and form that partnership. Certainly, I had the opportunity to listen, and I talk about listening before leading, or listening that will lead to, in some ways, a host of leading. But really, hearing the voices, and I'll describe some of the opportunities I've been able to enjoy these last few months, and that will continue throughout the first year and beyond. And then finally, to learn, that is to synthesize everything that, the perspectives of our stakeholders. For me, it starts with that larger question of what defines an Oyster River education, right? We have a mission, we have our values, our goals, but how do we look for, in some ways, in the everyday experiences, to really define what we value? And then really talk about the connection of where we see that happening and where we go from here. So it's really about to connect, to listen, and in some ways, to learn. I've had this unique opportunity to kind of do some pre-entry work. I've had the pleasure of touring all of our schools. I've had the opportunity to introduce myself to three out of four faculties and to answer questions about what I like, my interests and hobbies, and really just give a sense of who I am. I certainly have had the opportunity to sit down and start the process of interviewing individual board members to go through a protocol, to kind of work through that process, and look forward to the two newest board members to complete that as well. I've had an opportunity to sit down with administrators and talk about roles and responsibilities, and get a sense of history and outlook at the school level, and certainly enjoy the opportunity to participate in search process for the administrator, HR administrator, and facilities director positions, which was fantastic, because, one, again, to sit down with a group and to talk through and really kind of understand how the processes work and currently works here in Oyster River. And certainly, there were a number of activities that I've had, really an introduction to the school district that I've appreciated, and it's raised a lot more questions that will continue throughout. So this has really been invaluable and unusual, and in some ways, quite positive. So what to expect as the next step, what I would say from the July 1st to October 31st? I will continue with what I would say is leading by learning. One, I hope to establish publicly, work with Jen Brown, to really kind of come up with a formal schedule of listening tour with focus groups. I think, really, in my mind, it's really important to expand, to take the time to expand to constituents, the opportunity to sit down face-to-face and talk through their experiences, what people hope for, what they're proud of, and what really will lead to, I think, when you'll get to Phase 3, the formation of ideas around the next strategic plan. But to start by really engaging with people and do that in a very public and organized fashion. Second, I want to spend a lot of time in schools. I think it's critically important to really go from kindergarten through grade 12 to really, what I would say, routinize the experiences of just observing, teaching, and learning, to have those conversations with our educators and administrators, and really kind of develop a sense of place from that way. Obviously, there are so many organizations from municipal leaders and, I would say, broader community organizations, and coming up with a schedule where I can introduce myself, meet and greets, and start to have conversations. I was happy to participate in a safety meeting with law enforcement, and so I got to at least introduce myself, but really taking the time to meet everyone and knowing that that will be a first part of the Phase 1 action plan as well. I think the, as I mentioned, I look forward to our meeting with the board in July to really sit down and formalize our practices for co-governance, so that then, beginning in July, I can feel comfortable with the nuances of New Hampshire, I would say, government around education laws, through board agendas and meetings and structures like that, but to really agree upon a set of practices that will help our work together. Similarly, I'm looking forward to, in a few weeks, for June 20th, to meet with our administrative leadership team, to really focus on a similar process of understanding perspectives on where we're at as a system, to raise questions about that next level of work, and to really formalize goals, system goals, that are really underway and have been discussed in many of my conversations with Suzanne and Catherine and others about, really, what are the priorities right now and how I can support that work going forward? And then finally, really, what I would say is beyond looking at documents and just data is to immerse myself within the school system, the activities and the life of schools. I'm someone who really takes great pride in being part of concerts and athletic contests and all kinds of extracurricular activities, and really be present to see firsthand the student experiences. Similarly, my work with the board, as I had talked about, is really kind of co-constructing district goals. I know we've talked about moving them up in the summer months and really having time to work through that process. Certainly, starting to come up with our weekly meetings with board leadership to plan the agenda for the upcoming school year. But similarly, tackling some of the, what I would say, the larger system issues, working with the finance committee to talk about the budget process, to talk about other priorities in terms of fiscal planning that is critically important, which really cannot wait in many respects, and I think the earlier discussion this morning is, excuse me, this evening is an example of that kind of focus going forward. All of this attached to what I would say is a plan for communications. I think it's really important, as an incoming superintendent, to have what in some ways consistent communications with the broader community, to parents, so that there is good transparency around the work and the effort, and where we're heading as a school system. When we talk about Phase 2, from November to January 31st, I think for me, I'd like to take that opportunity, what I would call mid-year, to present what I've learned. I mean, part of this is to discover, to understand, and to be able to come back to the community in December and say, here's what I've heard from stakeholders, here's what we discussed, here's what was presented through our formal and informal conversations. Second is to provide the board and community update on our goal progress. You know, how are we doing, what are we working on relative to annual goals? The other part of this is starting to make sense of our aspirational goals, our mission, and where we are in reality to the gaps and challenges that come from the day-to-day experiences. So what we hope to accomplish, where we are relative to what data might tell us. You know, if we really are about ensuring individualized learning and engaging all students, where are we in terms of student experiences around participation in extracurricular activities and clubs? So really trying to look at the lived experience versus what we state as what we hope to accomplish overall. All of that, I think, in many respects, will help with organizing the budget process and prioritizing resources. And really, that last final step, and I know I'm racing through this, is to kind of pause and reflect on where we are with the strategic plan. There's been a lot of work around meeting the kind of tenants and goals of this multi-year plan. I think at this point, in the middle of the year, having an opportunity to kind of assess what has been accomplished, where we're at, and how that will influence what comes next would be really important. So it's that important kind of pause and assessment that I'm looking forward to with everyone. And finally, Phase 3 is about developing a shared vision for the future. It's really about what I would say is developing or introducing a framework for developing the next strategic plan. I have some thoughts and thinking about that process, to engage the community around that work, to launch the process in development, and then obviously align resources for the future for accomplishing that plan. So it really, what's interesting is that there is a nice arc, or I'd say bookends, relative to the work of Phase 1 of interviewing and generating conversations about what people appreciate about the system, where the system's at, and that process that will come in the spring about starting to think for the future and formalize a strategic plan. spring about starting to think for the future and formalize a strategic plan. So that's really an overview of the work, trying to at least provide a framework that, as I go back to my original aim, that will give a thoughtful approach to this leadership change, to provide for continuity, energize the system in some ways about what's possible, recognizing the uncertainty that people are feeling and thinking about after a distinguished tenure of Dr. Morris. And our work is collective, it's not just about one person coming in the system, but it's how we, as I say, empower everyone to work together. So I don't know if you have any questions. I know there was a lot there. I hope to, in some ways, memorialize this in a week or so and just get it up to community. Working with Jen to, we talked about the superintendent's section of the website, and then to post the plan, provide updates and communications as I start officially on July 1st. So this is just a preview. So thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Can we put this presentation on the website?
Oh, yeah. It goes with the minutes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Really appreciate all the work that you've put in and working with Dr. Morris. And thank you, Dr. Morris, for working with Dr. Shapps. And we're excited about the future of the district.
I appreciate it. I'm looking forward to it. And I wanted to just give a shout out to Jen Brown for the pictures. It was great when I asked her for a way to kind of really, in some way, showcase the experience of students. It was easy for her to find a number of photos, so thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. And to be continued. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any school board committee updates? Joanna?
Kind of regret not interrupting when we had the original comments, because it would have been great for a lot of the parents to have heard this one, so, oh, well. The DIJ committee met for the last time for this school year on May 20th. It was at the community church in Durham. The thing I wanted to bring people's attention to with that meeting is the fact that Oyster River Equity and Justice had developed a history timeline through a grant on the immigration history in the United States. And it's up inside the church now for public viewing, and it's really cool. So it has all these things where you've got, each panel is going through a timeline of not only like what happened during, from starting back in like the 17th century and going through to now with each law and the impacts was going on. And crucially, each panel at the bottom had a question for thought, to have you reflect on it and think about, and to have you have thoughts going forward of how it's affecting things now. It's something that actually can be borrowed for display, and so I think that'd be a great thing to be possibly migrating through the school or schools here as well. But I invite the community to go in and take a look at that immigration law history timeline. At the moment, I do believe that it's kind of open during the day, and you can go in, but if you have any questions, you can contact them. And so shout out to Kristin Ferselius, who's on the DIJ community group, for presenting that as well.
Real quick, where was that one more time?
It's at the community church at Durham.
Thank you very much. Committee updates? We now open back up for public comment. I would just, the same as before, please make sure you state your name clearly and what town you're from. If anyone here would like to speak.
Here you go, a second round. Okay. A couple of thoughts, and I don't have anything really prepared, other than my little notes that I took.
Could you reintroduce yourself?
Oh, yeah. Emily Johnson, Madbury. I'm an employee, but I'm talking as a parent. A few things that came up that really struck me were the parents of current elementary school students talking about the impact of COVID on their kids. The kindergarten-aged kids were COVID babies. My kindergartner didn't meet many of her family members until she was a toddler because of COVID. We very selectively chose our bubbles of people that we let into our household and we let our kids socialize with, and we based decisions about where to live off those people. Her best friend is the daughter of my best friend. And the idea of her riding a bus with her best friends and neighbors and then being either asked to get off first or to stay on the bus to go to a different school that she's never seen before, when she's been to Moheramit her whole life to go to the playground, and we told her it was her school. We bought our house from a classmate, knowing that it was a Moheramit house, it was in that district. We pay taxes just like the third and fourth graders' parents do to be in the district. So to hear that argument used for just the older students being affected was sort of alarming. Also, I work in special ed, and the special ed, mental health world have coincided a lot recently. The thought of somebody starting their public school experience in this way and not having their support and their people that they thought they would have is scary to me. I work in the high school, and I see those impacts. When people don't love school, it's a problem. Okay? So starting that way is hard for me to imagine. And then, just the other big point, I think, that's important is that this would be short-term for an encore class, you know, maybe a two-year problem. This would be our children's entire elementary experience and their siblings and their younger, younger siblings. It would be their whole experience. So I had art on a cart when I was in Moheramit. It was delightful, and I'm okay. Thank you for considering all of our thoughts and concerns and being willing to meet multiple extra times. I know how much that's hard. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Just state your name and your town. Yeah, thank you.
Jamie Pike with Madbury. My wife Laura had spoke earlier, and I don't think I'd be sleeping in the room tonight if I didn't get up here and speak. So, you know, again, appreciate your time. I don't want to belabor anybody's time here. You know, it's obviously a very complex and sticky issue across many fronts, I know. I heard a lot of, you know, a lot of conversation, a lot of great conversation between the school board members, superintendent, as well as all the principals here. So again, a lot of good collaboration. You know, but with that, there's always impacts to somebody. You know, I heard, you know, arts is going to be impacted, you know, students are going to be impacted, families are going to be impacted. I know, you know, personally speaking, I heard some other gentlemen here tonight as well say, you know, his round trip is going to be 40 minutes to Massway. Ours is about 20, you know, round trip. So, you know, you add that up over 180 days, there's just a lot of time that you can't spend with your kids or be home with the rest of the family while you're shuffling kids when we're typically like three minutes away from Moheramit right now. So again, I know there's a lot to dissect here overall, but, you know, long-term, I heard new buildings and those things, but I think the reality of that is, you know, five years from now, you might be actually walking students into those classrooms at that time. I don't see, you know, something getting constructed and built, finished, and, you know, student-ready within like the next three, four years. So, I mean, the problem really is, is still the short-term solution. And what that is, is, you know, you guys, not knowing all the ins and outs and intricacies of the administration side of, you know, student, you know, student numbers and whatnot, but, you know, I definitely know there's a lot of smart people here that can figure this out overall. So, again, thank you, thank you for your consideration. And, you know, I just, again, I, you know, I heard the principal speak as well, and I think there's nobody, you know, could probably speak, you know, smarter to what happens under his roof and, you know, his leadership in that building. So again, I know, I saw some nays tonight about the, you know, not giving the principal at least the forefront of making some of those decisions for his students. So, again, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Please.
My name's Irina Welch. I live in Durham with my husband and three children. I want to thank you all tonight for hearing everyone's perspectives. I left this room at the end of the kindergarten school topic, but could not leave the building without sharing some of my thoughts. I can appreciate all of the points made by the various school members here tonight, and the sentiment has rung out, is the dedication to our children's well-being, safety, and development. The question I would pose to the board is how will telling a child that they can't go to school with the kids they play with in the neighborhood help their mental health and development of a sense of community? Is that not why people move into this community to begin with? A little background about me, my family immigrated to this country when I was 10 years old from Albania. We knew no one in this country, did not know how to speak English at all, and my parents were always working to make ends meet. These reasons directly affected how I grew up and the limited impact I had for my community. And I decided to make it my mission to change that for my three children. So when my husband and I decided to move to Durham, we specifically chose this neighborhood and forged really strong relationships with our close neighbors, some who are here tonight to offer my children the childhood I never had and the community I always yearned for. It is for these reasons and many more that I urge you to consider and vote on one of the alternative solutions presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Patrick Napier from Madbury. It's been interesting hearing from all sides of the situation, and I can appreciate Ms. Smith's comment that it's hard to balance a small impact to a large population versus a larger impact to a smaller group. I can also understand the hesitancy to reduce the strength of the arts program. That said, I think it's important to keep in mind what Dr. Morris, a previous art teacher, said about how the content of the education will remain intact, even with a difference in the delivery method. I also remember Mr. Goldsmith's comment about trusting his teachers to ensure the quality remains high, and I trust in his opinion. And again, this is a short-term impact to the community to avoid a decade-long impact to these children. I also really appreciated Ms. Bennett's comments about the importance of getting children outside and playing in their neighborhoods. I think the sense of community is critical. I think it basically boils down to that. It's, do you want to protect a sense of community, or, you know, do you want to make sure that art, music have a dedicated classroom? And again, I appreciate your time, and I look forward to seeing you next week.
Thank you very much.
I was not planning to say anything tonight, so I'm a little nervous. I will say that. My name is Sarah Hart, and I live in Madbury, and I have two children. One is in first grade at Moheramit, and I have, he'll be going into second grade, and I have a kindergartner who will be starting at Moheramit. I wanted to come here tonight to hear everything that was going on, from not only the board, but from my co-friends in the community and my co, just neighborhood, right? And so I heard everything I left, and I had to come back to say a few things. I'm a licensed mental health clinician. I'm licensed in Mass in New Hampshire. I work with mental health every single day. I'm also a licensed art therapist, so I really understand the perspective of keeping the art and music program intact. That being said, I think all of us know art and music can be done anywhere. I really enjoyed hearing Dr. Morris say how he himself did art on the cart and how art can be formed anywhere. My kids currently go to an outdoor classroom, and they build, they make music, they do art outside. So it can be done. I'm also, I'll be honest, I'm a little disappointed that the vote went three to three today. After hearing, I wanted to hear what our principal had to say and his perspective. I really trust David, and it was really interesting to hear him say about how important it is for us to be a community, and the fact that he is the principal and everyone heard his perspective, which I hadn't heard until tonight, that he really believes in his art teacher and his music teacher to make this work, to keep our neighborhoods intact, to have my kindergartner go with his best friend, kindergartner that I thought I was prepping him for, who lives one minute from the school, I think is really significant that everyone on the board, I just please ask you to just hear what David said about what he believes in in his school and hear what I say about the mental health and how it's important for these kids to go to school with their neighborhood friends. And I understand everyone will be together in middle school, and we are all one community, but it will impact them. It will. So thank you for opening this back up at the end of the night. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Kelly Napier from Madbury. I just wanted to reiterate that this is a short-term impact to the arts program, which can still be a very great program compared to a very significant negative impact to our families for the next decade, which truly does not feel fair. I urge those of you who voted to keep the current plan, to reconsider, and not to have our kids bear the burden of this community issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, thank you. To begin with, for closing actions, our future meeting dates. We now have a meeting on next Wednesday, June 12th, at 7:00 PM at Moheramit. That will be a regular meeting for, to make motions and vote, which will also include another time set aside for public comment at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. We additionally have rescheduled our third Wednesday meeting to the 20th. I'm sorry, did I say that that 12th will be at Moheramit? Okay. That will be on June 20th, which is two weeks from tomorrow, here in the middle school at the regular meeting time of 7:00 PM. And just one that's not on there is that July 17th. That is the third Wednesday in July. We will not have a meeting the first Wednesday of July, that's the week of, 4th of July. The third Wednesday of July, that will be a very short meeting followed by a workshop, as you heard Dr. Shapps say, where we will meet, we'll do the meeting and then move to a workshop afterwards. Does anyone have any questions?
Just want to point out, Matt, that you have one last opportunity to bring me into a board meeting on the 27th.
Oh. I've already got the motion written, and I expect a second.
They're just going to sneak it in at the end.
As we have no non-public sessions, can I have a motion to adjourn from Heather? And a second from Brian? Any discussion? That was a lot funnier in my head. All in favor? Six in favor, student rep in favor. Thank you.